All right, friends. Good afternoon. I'm so glad that you are all here. We're gonna, today, we'll have, we have some challenging texts today, and we're going to dig into those and talk a little, learn a little bit more about ourselves, learn a little bit more about our forbears in the faith, but certainly tackle some of these challenging, wonderful texts that we have from the book of Genesis. To begin us, I'm going to begin with a collect from the book of Common Prayer. The Lord be with you.
Also with you.
Let us pray. Blessed Lord, who caused all holy scriptures to be written for our learning, grant us so to hear them, read, mark, learn, and inwardly digest them, that we may embrace and ever-holfast the blessed hope of everlasting life, which you have given us in our Savior, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, forever and ever. Amen. Okay, Andy, when you get ready, we can share the screen. We're gonna go back to that family tree. We're gonna talk about some of the things that we've seen from this family tree in these weeks that we have been together. So here's our family tree. Abraham, our, you know, forbear in the faith, who is now considered the forbear of three different traditions, Judaism, Islam, and Christianity. We know that Abraham was married to Sarah. Abraham also had a union with Hagar, and to the union with Hagar was born Ishmael. And, and if we're gonna start naming things that we have seen in this, in this part of our family tree, if we were just thinking about human traits that we have seen, certainly there is a trait of resilience, because we have Abraham going forth from the place where he is sent to go out to this new land where God has sent him on the basis of a promise that God has made to him. And God has made a promise that I'm going to make nations of you, and that you will have more descendants in the sands on the shore and the stars in the sky. Except Abraham seems to be childless for a long time, until he and Sarah decide that Hagar will be entered into that picture, and Hagar gives birth to Ishmael. It is probably about 13 years after Hagar has given birth to Ishmael that Sarah then gives birth to Isaac. And of course, all of these folks have not gotten along well. What a, what a surprise that they've not gotten along well. So in addition to the resilience that we might be claiming of Abraham and the faithfulness that we might be claiming of Abraham in going forth to this place that he, about which he knows nothing, and this life about which he knows nothing. There's also, you know, taking matters into their own hands, which they've not been asked to do. And then there's the jealousy and enmity that arise between these folks once, once Hagar, younger woman, actually does produce an heir for Abraham, then, then we know that there's a lot of enmity between them. Another characteristic, I guess, that we can talk about that runs in this family of Abraham is barrenness, the inability to have children, or at least to have them quickly. We see that Sarah is barren for a long time. Rebecca, Isaac's wife, will be barren for a long time. Jacob's favorite wife, Rachel, will be barren for a long time. So this becomes a theme that runs through this narrative of, you know, that barrenness and waiting, waiting for God to act, waiting for that next thing to happen. And that's gonna be a theme that will run through all three of these generations. So we leave Isaac and Rebecca having these twin sons, Esau and Jacob. Esau, who of course is the firstborn of the twins, entitled to the birthright, entitled to the blessing. He trades his birthright for a bowl of stew because he's hungry. I think we encounter this again in the New Testament when Jesus is tempted, and he says, "One shall not live by bread alone." That, that comes back to us to remind us about certain kinds of temptations that we face and how we face them. Esau trades his birthright. Jacob steals his blessing with Rebecca's help. Just becomes his brother, takes on his brother's persona, takes the blessing, and leaves Esau with nothing other than a desire to kill Jacob. I mean, this is where we kind of leave off this story is, "You've taken everything from me now, so I'm, I'm waiting for the opportunity to eliminate you." And of course, had he actually killed his brother, it wouldn't be the first time we'd seen that, because we saw that at the very beginning of the book of Genesis. The very first killing that we see in Genesis is between brothers, Cain and Abel. So I guess we shouldn't have been surprised. But we're gonna be surprised by what does happen in this story. And we're gonna dig in to this text, because there's a lot of text to talk about our human shortcomings and frailties as we, we dig into this, the depth of this story of Esau and Jacob. So, Andy? Yeah. Thank you. So Jacob has kind of met up with a whole lot. I mean, we've skipped some things in this story. Jacob has met up with some trouble of his own. He falls in love with Rachel, but Rachel can't be his, because Lea is her older sister, and their father Laban is not going to allow Jacob to marry Rachel until he has first married Lea. And this is another, you know, family dynamic that we don't talk about, but you know, there, there is that story of Lea, that I've given my husband everything. I've given him sons. I have been, you know, the dutiful wife, and I have done what I was supposed to do. I've given him sons. My husband's never really gonna love me, because it's my sister that my husband really loves. And there's absolutely nothing I can do that's going to change that dynamic and make me the one that my husband's going to want. So there's that underlying story in all of this as well. I mean, the stories of the women are as powerful in this text as the stories of the men, because the stories of the women are powerful, and, and, and we see the hurt that continues on through the family. Well, Jacob has been at dear old Uncle Laban's trying to hide out from Esau for a while. He's, he's hoping that Esau has gone away and is happy and content, and maybe Esau might forget about what he's done. I don't know. I probably wouldn't be forgetting that my brother had done all that to me. But he's probably hoping that Esau is forgetting some of this, or at least that his passions have become a little bit cooler over time. And as Jacob is traveling again, he finds out that Esau is heading toward him. And not only is Esau heading toward them, but he finds out, "We came to your brother Esau. He is coming to meet you, and 400 men are with him." Then Jacob was greatly afraid and distressed, and he divided the people that were with him, and the flocks, and the herds, and camels, into two companies, thinking, "If Esau comes to one company and destroys it, then the company that is left will escape." This is hedging his bets that he will preserve at least part of his family. If Esau is coming with 400 men, Esau is coming with a formidable, yeah, he, he's perceiving army. We'll find out that's not what's happening. But Jacob's perceiving that Esau's coming toward him with an army to, you know, destroy him. That's actually not what's happening. And Jacob now is beginning to pray. "God of my father Abraham, God of my father Isaac, I am not worthy of the least of the steadfast love and faithfulness that you have shown to your servant, for with only my staff I have crossed this Jordan, and now I have become two companies. Deliver me, please, from the hand of my brother, from the hand of Esau, for I am afraid of him. He may come and kill us all, the mothers with the children. Yet you have said, 'I will surely do you good and make your offspring as the sand of the sea, which cannot be counted because of their number.'" So he separated things out, told his servants to go on in front, put a space between the droves of his cattle and livestock. And, and he's told everyone what to do when they encounter Esau, so that he can try to preserve his belongings and his family as best as he can. And he's thinking, "If I give him a present, if I'm offering him some of my riches," because I have great riches now, "if I'm offering him some of my riches, perhaps that will be enough. If I just give him something of what I have, perhaps that will be enough, and he will accept me." And so they passed on with the present ahead of him, and Jacob spends the night at this place of encampment. And now we're coming to a text, which is one of the best texts, I think, in the book of Genesis. Andy, we can go ahead. And this is Jacob at the Jabbak. "Same night he got up and took his two wives, his maids, his 11 children," and these are the two slave women, right? These, these are the two slave women, Bilhah and Zilpa. "His 11 children, and he crossed the ford of the Jabbak. He took them and sent them across the stream, and likewise, everything that he had. Jacob was left alone, and a man wrestled with him until daybreak. When the man saw that he did not prevail against Jacob, he struck him on the hip socket, and Jacob's hip was put out of joint as he wrestled with him. Then he said, 'Let me go, for the day is breaking.' But Jacob said, 'I will not let you go unless you bless me.' So he said to him, 'What is your name?' And he said, 'Jacob.' Then the man said, 'You shall no longer be called Jacob,'" but note what he's gonna call him, "Israel, for you have striven with God and with humans, and have prevailed. Then Jacob asked him, 'Please tell me your name.' But he said, 'Why is it that you ask my name?' And there he blessed him. So Jacob called the place Peniel, saying, 'For I have seen God face to face, and yet my life is preserved.' The sun rose upon him as he passed Peniel, limping because of his hip." Now, that, it's a very striking thing that we have to note about how Jacob leaves this encounter. He does not leave this encounter the way he found it. He leaves this encounter with a permanent reminder of this encounter, because now he has a dislocated hip. Therefore, to this day, the Israelites do not eat the thigh muscle that is on the hip socket, because he struck Jacob on the hip socket at the thigh muscle. I really wanna spend some time talking about this text. Theologians obviously have made much, 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 much of this text. For this is Jacob wrestling with something, wrestling with a man, wrestling with an angel, wrestling with God. To a few theologians who wonder if Jacob was actually wrestling with his own conscience, and he gave him the appearance of a being when it was his own conscience with which he was wrestling, reminding him of the things that he had done. But whatever it is that he's wrestling with, whoever, whatever he's wrestling with, he's asked for a blessing. Striking text for the one who stole the blessing from his brother. He's asking for a blessing. And what happens to him in this instance is that he is given a new name. Now, we know, from looking at our family tree and looking at Abraham, we know what happens when folks get new names, because God's getting ready to do a new thing. And Jacob here is getting a name. And, and I do need some time to, to explore this more deeply with some of my, my rabbi friends. But given the name Israel. And, and we hear this name given to him, and we think, "So he's kind of a liar and a cheat? Hasn't done right by his family? Hasn't done right by people that he knows? And yet, God has seen something in this character, Jacob, that has given him a new start, a new name, a new possibility, and a name that would go on for the family that would come from him, come from, from Abraham and come through his line. It's not coming through Esau. It's not coming through Esau. It's coming through Jacob, this line. And I see it as such an opportunity for hopefulness for all of us. There's, there's some, and I know I can't quote this right, but, but something, there's a saying that someone has about us being worth a lot more than the worst day that we ever experience. And Jacob is obviously worth more than the worst day that he has ever experienced. He's, he's worth more than that, because God sees something in him that is very different. And God sees something in him that is worth preserving. So this is, this is one of those stories that I like to remember, because on the days that we think that we just didn't get it right, and something has been left in our wake, we have to remind ourselves that God sees something in us often that we don't see in ourselves. So again, a really important thing for us to keep in mind. And, and Jacob says, "I have seen God face to face, and yet my life is preserved." So he's gonna go on. He is going to go on, limping. He's going to go on with a physical affliction to remind him of this encounter with God. Sometimes I think, we think that encounters with God leave us in a, in a, in, in a better state, a well state. This is an encounter with God that's actually left him limping, so that he can remember always. He's, he's got a memory now of all that he's done wrong, and yet, all that is to come, because there's certainly much more of his family's story to come. And I hope that as we, you know, get into some question time, I hope we'll spend a little bit more time with some questions from all of you about this, this Jacob at the Jabbak encounter, which is just such a powerful, powerful scene. Andy, we can go on to the next slide. Go on to 33.
You there?
Yes. So Jacob looked up, after he's had this incredible encounter. He looks up and sees Esau coming and 400 men with him. And no doubt, he's terrified as he's seeing this. So, thank you. Thank you, Andy. That's it. Each one of us is, is more than the worst thing we've ever done. I should've known that would be something that Bryan Stevenson would say. "Jacob looked up and saw Esau coming and 400 men with him. So he divided the children among Lea and Rachel and the two maids. And he put the maids with their children in front, okay, you know, in order, the, the most expendable to the least expendable, right? So Bilhah and Zilpa and their children, they're gonna be in front. Then Lea with her children, and Rachel and Joseph last. Now, we know Joseph is going to be this favorite child. Joseph is gonna be the child that is beloved by Jacob, because that is the firstborn child of Rachel, the wife that he has loved so dearly. So he goes in front of them, bowing himself to the ground, comes near his brother. But notice what happens in this encounter. "Esau ran to meet him, embraced him, fell on his neck, kissed him, and they wept." Esau is not meeting him with violence. I mean, we think about all the character, the human characteristics that we have been seeing as we have made our way through these family stories in Genesis. We've seen violence, anger, jealousy, bitterness. We've seen all kinds of things. We're gonna see something else here. "Esau looked up and saw the women and children. He said, 'Who are these with you?' Jacob said, 'The children whom God has graciously given your servant.' Then the maids drew near, they and their children, and bowed down. Lea likewise, and her children, drew near and bowed down. And finally, Joseph and Rachel, that favorite child and the favorite wife, drew near, and they bowed down. Esau said, 'What do you mean by all this company that I met?' Jacob answered, 'To find favor with my Lord.' But Esau said, 'I have enough, my brother. Keep what you have for yourself.'" This is Esau's message to the brother who has taken his patriarchal blessing and traded his birthright for a bowl of stew. "I have enough. Keep what you have for yourself." Jacob said, "No, please. If I have found favor with you, then accept my present from my hand, for truly to see your face is like seeing the face of God, since you have received me with such favor. Please accept my gift that is brought to you, because God has dealt graciously with me, and because I have everything I want." So he urged him, and he took it. So the counter to, the counter narrative, I guess, to all of the jealousy and violence and anger and bitterness that we have seen in this story is now a forgiving Esau. Esau's forgiving, and says, "I have enough." It was a surprising, a surprising thing for Esau to say, "I have enough, from the brother who's taken so much from him. I have enough. Keep what you have." This, this is such an interesting narrative, and hopefully says something to us about how we respond when evil is done around us. I am reminded of a couple of things. I'm reminded of the young man who was killed in Texas by the police officer who showed up at his apartment, thinking it was her apartment. Botham, what was Botham's whole name? Golly, can't believe I can't remember his name. And his family's response, his brother's response, that there was only one thing for them to do, and that was to forgive her for going to his apartment and shooting him. And I'm also reminded of the folks from Mother Emanuel Church in Charleston, whose response to Dylann Roof, Botham Jean, that is, that is his name, the man who was killed in Texas, Botham Jean. Dylann Roof went into Mother Emanuel Church, prayed with folks, sat in Bible study with folks, and then turned his gun on them and killed them. And the response of Mother Emanuel Church was, "It is, we are called to forgiveness. We're called to forgiveness." And so I want, I wanna spend a moment on that, and please drop stuff in the chat. Please, please drop stuff in the chat. Is this the right response? Is this the right response? How do, how, how do you react to Esau's response as he sees Jacob? How do you, how do you react to that? And how do you react to God's response? Because now Jacob has a new name, and we, we already see as these things unfold in Scripture, when we get a new name, there's usually a new story behind our names. So how, how do you respond to that? I think nobody has a response to that. Ah, here we go. "Last week I was struck by Esau begging and asking if there wasn't anything left for him." And is Esau the God figure in the story? Well, I'm not sure he's the God figure in the story, as much as he might be, as much as he might be the representation of what God hopes for all of us in what it truly means to love neighbor as ourselves. I think he might be, in that instance, in that moment, we might be catching him in, in his best moment, and the moment that God would hope for all of us if we were experiencing the same thing. And yes, and this week, he says he has enough. He's probably had some time to reflect himself. Is, one of the things that I think we have to ask when we see situations like this, if, if you're Esau, is one of the questions that you ask, "Why would my brother need to do this? Why would my brother's level of desperation be such that he would need to take this from me?" Because there's, there's obviously a story there about Jacob and who Jacob is, that Jacob's not okay with being the younger son. He's not okay with what he would have as the younger son. He needs and wants more. So instead of being satisfied with what he would have as the younger son, he's not going to be satisfied until he gets what his brother would have had. By sparing Jacob, isn't he also, in a sense, the father of Israelites? Yes. Yes. Oh, and that's my, that, that, thank you, Lee. That's exactly what happens here, is God sees something in Jacob that is powerful enough that God would give Jacob the name Israel. That's, that's a, that's a big, that's a big new name for kind of a cheating guy, a guy who's gonna cheat his own father on his deathbed. That's kind of a big name for, for him to take. for, for him to take. And yes, we are reminded that forgiveness is as much for the forgiver as the forgiven. I often say to folks, if we realized, I think deeply, the words of the Lord's prayer, we would realize just how hard a prayer we're praying. We, we, we take it in as children. And I don't think we always think about the, what we're actually asking of God. We're asking to be forgiven as we forgive. We're asking for our daily bread. We're, we're asking, we're asking things that, that might be countercultural to us. Cause we're not asking for more than we need. We're not asking for retribution against those who harm us. But rather, we're asking to be forgiven as we forgive. So that's, that's, that's a whole different set of requests and petitions of God than I think we're often cognizant that we are making. So yeah, the, the, these are hard, hard texts. And, and yes, Esau is in a very different place. Time has passed. Esau has amassed great wealth himself. He's gone off, he's done his thing himself. And he doesn't need anything from Jacob. Even though Jacob now feels like he needs to give Esau something to make up for what he has done. Please accept this gift because God has dealt graciously with me and because I have everything I want. Yes, I, I, I see this, this, does, does he offer reparations? In a way, maybe he's offering reparations. That, that really may be what he's doing. Either reparations or he's just trying to spare his own neck and his, and then the lives of his family. Hoping that something that he can offer up to Esau will be enough to make sure that, that at least he and Rachel and Joseph will pass through unharmed. Because, you know, the expendables are at the front of the line. So if somebody's going to be done away with, the expendables are at the front of the line. The, the two slave women and their children are at the front of the line. And then Lea and her children, and then Rachel and Joseph, who are precious and dear, so that nothing will happen to them. So yeah, maybe, maybe reparations, maybe not. May, maybe just his own offering to try to keep himself alive. And yeah, Esau's going to be the better man through this scene. He is, he's going to be the better man through this scene. Because all of that anger, all of that bitterness, all of that hatred, all of his desire for retribution, all of his plans for murdering his brother, he has let go of all of that. And time has passed and he realizes probably they're what's left. They, they are the remnant that is left, even though they will continue to go in separate directions. They are the remnant that is left of their father. Cause we, we're not told that Isaac had any other children. So they're the remnant that is left of him. And even though they will be in different places in the world and will go off and do different things, they, they are the remnant that is left. So we have this incredible scene and Esau says, let us journey on our way and I will go alongside you. But Jacob said to him, my Lord knows that the children are frail and the flocks and herds which are nursing are a care to me. And if they're overdriven for one day, all the flocks will die. Let my Lord pass on ahead of his servant and I will lead on slowly according to the pace of the cattle that are before me and according to the pace of the children until I come to my Lord in Sire. So Esau said, let me leave with you some of the people who are with me. Generosity, here, here's another thing that we see, another trait that we see of God's people, generosity. Let me leave with you some of the people who are with me. But he said, why should my Lord be so kind to me? So Esau returned that day on his way to Sire. Jacob journeyed to Sakhot and built himself a house and made booths for his cattle. Therefore, the place is called Setok. Jacob came safely to the city of Setim, which is the land of Canaan on his way from Patan Aram. And he camped before the city. And the sons of Hamor, Setim's father, he brought, he bought for 100 pieces of money, the plot of land on which he had pitched his tent. There he erected an altar and called it El Edewe Israel. So he's beginning to use that name, the name that will go on for many, many generations of their family. And, and it's a name that's given to Jacob. So Andy, if we can go back to the beginning of Genesis 32, just go back two slides, I guess. Yep, next one. What do you think? I'll give you all a chance to type some stuff into the chat. If you were Jacob, would you be afraid for your life, knowing that Esau was coming after you with 400 men? Would you be afraid? Or what would you be thinking? Well, what would you be thinking if you knew that Esau was coming toward you with 400 men? Yes, I would be afraid. Yeah. I would be desperately afraid and have to acknowledge the evil I had done, seeking revenge, coming to attack. I can't imagine the level of fear that Jacob would have at that point. I mean, I, I can't imagine that. Because Jacob knows what he's done. He knows what he's done and, and I can't imagine the fear. Jacob would probably get rid of any of his material possessions. His family, that's, that, that would be a lot harder for him to give up a family that is so precious to him, particularly that son Joseph, that firstborn son of Rachel. Why, and I, I, I'm interested as, as folks are thinking through some of these questions, why do you think that it may have taken so long for Rachel to be able to give Jacob a child? Like he's, by the time Jacob comes along, we have a time, I'm sorry. By the time Joseph comes along, he's the 11th of 12 sons. There's only going to be one more son, that's Benjamin, Rachel's second child. Why do we think that it has taken so long? All these sons, all this family, why has it taken so long for Jacob to have a child with Rachel? Jacob only has two paradigms to choose from. Esau is either weak and can be defeated or strong and will defeat him. Possibility of strength and forgiveness as a possibility is unknown to him. Cause that's not how he's been wound. He's not been a forgiving person himself. And, and he doesn't know the meaning of being forgiven. The last shall be first. Ooh, for Jacob to live with the implication of what he has done to steal the inheritance. Yeah, he, he's had to wait a while for Rachel to be able to give him a child. And through all of that time, this, this, this metaphor of Israel's barrenness, as Israel would be coming back to read these scrolls later on, this metaphor of Israel's own barrenness and loss and suffering personified in these women of Abraham's family who have waited so long, waited so long for, for a child and for life to spring from them. And if, when we think about this, kind of layering this well ahead, layering this on top of an enslaved people called Israel, layering it on top of an exiled people called Israel. To be able to wait for life to spring forth is going to be, th- this is going to be a very real test for this people called Israel. And so to be able to look back at, at this story and to say, ah, but even our forebear Abraham and our forebear Isaac and our forebear Jacob, even they had to wait for life to be able to spring forth. So this, this story is going to come back for, for all of us as a story of how long we might be in what we consider a time of barrenness and a time when life seems to not be springing forth and having to wait for the day on which life does spring forth for us. And it might come in a way that we don't expect it, right? Andy, we can, we can go ahead to the next one. We'll take up a little bit more of this. Nope, nope, no, back to, back to 32, back to 32, second slide. There we go. Nope, next one, next one. Yeah, there we go, got it. I want to spend some time on Jacob at the jabber. Like I said, I love this text. I love this text. I love Jacob being struck on the hip socket and, and having to walk away from this moment with a limp. And so here's my question. I mean, cause theologians are all over the map about this text. Was Jacob wrestling with God? Was Jacob wrestling with some other being that, that has appeared before him? Is Jacob wrestling with Jacob? Is he wrestling with Jacob? So interested in knowing what you all think about that text. And, and Jacob walking away, walking away with a limp from that encounter, but also walking away with a new name. This is his blessing. His blessing really is he's being given a new name. Well, what, what, I'm interested in hearing what y'all think about that. With a new name, he is now a new person. We sure hope so. Yes, we, we hope he is a new person with this new name. But if nothing else, he's going to walk away with a limp to remind him about it forever. Wrestling with himself, his conscience. Interesting to think about Jacob wrestling with himself. Yeah, there, there's certainly some theologians who would say that he is wrestling with himself. When the man saw that he did not prevail, he struck him on the hip socket. Doesn't sound like God, no, does not sound like God. I'm fascinated that he can look at God face to face and live. Well, this is, this is Jacob's perspective, that he is looking at God face to face and living. Jacob may not actually have seen God face to face, even though Jacob is going to walk with this, this dislocated hip for the rest of his time. He may, what he may have seen is his own conscience telling him what he's done. And that becomes his encounter with God, right? And my, my encounter with God is now I'm, I'm having to come face to face with who I am and what I've done. And somehow my life is preserved. Cause yeah, my brother could have killed me way back then when this all happened. Whatever this being is with, with whom he's been wrestling, could have killed him. Didn't have to leave him alive. Yeah. So yes, Lee, a, a true encounter with God is a unique blessing, but it may give you a limp. Yes, you may walk away from that encounter with a limp as the dent in our ego and selfishness. We have wounds, let me see, and scars from our wrestling, some are more visible. God, angel, man, we don't give over control or absence of it easily, ever. And yes, I'm fascinated that Jacob says he won't let him go until he first blesses Jacob. Who is this that he requires his blessing? Or is this just Jacob and Jacob's nature? That you must leave me with something, so leave me with a blessing. It's good, be Jacob's nature that I'm, I'm not going to leave the encounter empty handed. So give me your blessings so that I'm not leaving this encounter empty handed. But I think for, for Jacob to be wrestled down in this way, probably is a way for Jacob to realize that this person, this being, whatever this being is, is, has sufficient fortitude that Jacob should ask for something from him. Cause Jacob's been fairly strong and invincible up until this point. So now he's met up with something that is strong enough that, yep, I, 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 I want a blessing from you before you go away. And perhaps the real blessing was the hip injury. But he's never going to forget it. I mean, that's, that's, that's the certainty. The certainty is that he's not going to forget it. So he can associate his new name with the day that he walked away with a limp and walked away as a different person himself. And he, and, and there are times that we all need to maybe walk away with a limp. Are there times that we all kind of need to walk away with a limp? To be reminded that we do not have as much power in ourselves as we would like to think that we have. That that power is really God. And when we become full of ourselves and think that we are completely and totally in control, we might need that godly reminder that we are not, we are not in control. And Jacob's not going to forget from this encounter that he is not in control. Yes, he got a blessing. Yes, he got a new name. But yes, he's also going to be walking away with a dislocated hurting hip. All the things, all the things. Anything else anybody wants to raise about this part of the text before we go on to Genesis 33 quickly? Okay, we'll, we'll go on to 33. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I missed something here. Naming gives power over the one thing named. If Ja- Jacob wrestles with himself and requires a new name of himself, he has the power to change himself and the power over himself. Thanks Ed, thank you for that. Okay, we'll go on to 33. Um, and this, this sense of what does it mean to be a forgiving people? And what does it mean to be a forgiven people? Um, because Esau also has a choice in all of this. Esau doesn't have to be forgiving. Esau could have met him with all out war. This is not what happens. Esau meets him and has forgiven him and sees him as brother. Does not see him as enemy, but sees him as brother. And I'm going to just go on a limb here and say Jacob's pretty surprised by that. Cause I mean, Jacob's been preparing for the worst this whole time. This whole time Jacob has been preparing for the worst in this encounter. And that's not what happens. So the things that we have to see of ourselves, um, to see ourselves as both the forgiven people and the forgiving people. Um, we're encountering the, the, the text of the lost sons this Sunday in the Gospel from Luke. Um, I, I think of them as two lost sons. I don't think of them as one lost son. I, I think there's two lost sons in that, that parable. Um, lost for different reasons and lost in different ways. And one who doesn't understand that he belongs and has always belonged. And one who is surprised by grace that he can belong. Um, and I think, I think of this text and I think of that in the same light of brothers who could be lost. But one of them is going to be the forgiving brother in the midst of all of, of this story. He's going to be the forgiving brother who says, "It's okay. It is okay because I have enough. I have enough and I don't need to be angry anymore. I was, I was angry, but I don't need to be angry now because I have enough." Do we ever think that? Is that our human nature to think, oh, I have enough? Oh, I should forgive you even though you have taken away something that is so precious to me that I can't even begin to understand how you could have taken it from me? Um, is that how we tend to respond to things? And I'll, I'll give us, we got a couple more minutes, so I'll give folks a chance to add some more things to the chat if you want to respond to this part of this text. Grateful contentment. Not forgiving becomes such a burden. I'm going to have to agree with you there. That not forgiving does indeed become a burden. We talk about the people who get to live rent-free in our heads. Um, and sometimes I think those are the people who get to live rent-free in our heads. The people we can't forgive and can't let go of. I think they kind of get to live rent-free in our heads. Disturbing us. So yeah, we, we see a lot of characteristics as we, we journey on through this family. We see a lot of characteristics of the good characteristics, forgiveness, kindness, compassion, juxtaposed against greed and selfishness and jealousy and anger. Um, all of these things that are part of the human condition. They're, they're part of who we are and they're part of what we are. And yet God loves us and God sees potential in us even when we don't see that potential in ourselves. Um, God sees potential in us even when we have done things that sound to others like things that are impossible to forgive and move away from. Um, God still sees other possibilities within us. And this is God seeing possibilities in Jacob who will be named Israel. Um, and what a name, what a name for, for Jacob to be given. So I love these texts um, because they, they, they give me hope. They've always given me hope that, um, back to what Bryan Stevenson said, I gotta scroll back to that one now so I can say it right. Each of us is more than the worst thing we've ever done. So Jacob and Esau are going to be more than the worst thing they've ever done. They're whole and real and people full of possibility, just as we all are. Just as we all are. So we're going to dig more deeply into the story of Joseph next week. Um, that's a hard story to, we, 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 I've got seconds here to talk about family dysfunction. Um, because there's, there's family dysfunction that has been evident through all of Abraham's family. Um, and now we're going to see more family dysfunction that really is going to come to life as we see what happens with this favorite son Joseph. And the dynamics that are turned loose when Jacob chooses a favorite son who's number 11 of his sons. What happens to those first 10 sons and the anger that is unleashed in a family system for a father making that choice? Cause there's going to be a whole lot of anger and bitterness and hurt and jealousy and all those things that are going to be unleashed in Jacob's family. Um, so we'll get to see dysfunction again, um, in another generation of Abraham's people. So. Any other last questions, comments? Let me scroll down here and make sure I didn't miss anything in the chat. All right. I will see you all next week and we'll look at some more of this family. Thank you all for being part of this time. Bye.